All right, I would call this meeting to order and document the time of six thirty-five. Tonight, we have a special intro for our call to order. We're gonna do the Star Spangled Banner. We have with us Lyndon Bronz Russo, Eliza Willis, and Anna Willis. Are you ready, girls? Stand.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that Star Spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was wonderful. That is our second edition of Singing of the National Anthem. And I'm gonna go out on a limb, but I wanna say we've got a new first place, you know, a new trend set here.
Yes. That's the third. There was another JFK student who did it, uh, Thera. When we did the social thinking thing, yeah.
Very nice way to start.
So anybody else who wants to do it, join us.
That was great. That is not an easy song, is it?
It's not.
Yeah?
Goes low, goes up.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That was great.
Like to start with any agenda adjustments? Anything everybody sees in here or just... Okay, then we'll move right into then the focus on learning. Twitter goodness.
Tweeting right now.
Are you tweeting?
Can someone teach me how to tweet?
Not fast enough. Somebody needs to teach me how to text quicker.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Get those thumbs going. Come on.
Two thumbs, two thumbs is better.
I know, I'm not that good.
This is gonna be a lesson on the front board to chart twenty-eight.
Consensus?
I'm not distracted, I'm just tweeting.
I watch the New York City nation, maybe that whole hashtag thing for the government shutdown. And I'm like, I don't know how to do it, or I have some comments I would be putting up there.
Maybe over here for five minutes.
So what I wanted to show the board tonight was the Twitter feed that we've set up on the front of our website. And Twitter has a remarkable number of ways that it can be used. And the first way, the first kind of phase of development that we're gonna use it for at Wenuski is just to show and share with the community all the great things that are happening within the school community. And then additional phases after that would be things like using it for communication of announcements and events and so forth. And then thirdly, for professional development. It's an outstanding professional development tool for teachers, also a learning tool for students. But we're starting with that first part and will progress as we go. Right now, I'm the, I'm the author or the person behind the Wenuski Learns Twitter handle right now. And I've shared it with the staff, so they send me pictures when things are happening in their classrooms, on field trips and activities. And we post them in real time as quickly, as much as we can, so that parents, community members, staff, students can then go on, right onto the front of the website and they can see the great things that are happening all in the school community. So I wanted to share just a few examples. So one example, high school arts. And this had to do with our students going out and working on interpretations of beauty up close and working with a community partner, Sally's Flowers. This is from the iLab Acceptance Night, one of the students' learning goals around understanding how Korea influences China through music by looking at economic reports and other pieces of information.
That's a sophisticated question.
Very. We had students who were running the cash register for the Scholastic Fair, selling books to their fellow students. We had some sharp-looking young men here who were dressed up for mock job interviews and we had business people from the community coming in and interviewing them.
Think you got a job? Hope it's not a mock job.
Another instance of recognizing some of the adults in our community. Betsy Dubuque, who is the middle school and high school administrative assistant. And she was awarded by the principal Leon Wheeler with Inspiring Educator of the Month. Some art from the high school, again. And last week, there was a Stars Dance Party celebration in the cafeteria as the students are all moving towards earning their stars with performing as much expected behavior as they can and having lots of green thoughts through the social thinking curriculum.
Something happens when they get to twenty thousand.
Yes.
What is it?
What happens when you get to twenty thousand?
Do you do a school-wide celebration?
A school-wide celebration, yeah. And here's one of me being taught by one of the high school students how to shoot a bow and arrow this week.
How'd you do?
I did all right.
Good teacher.
One for two. I hit the target once and sent one flying. The other piece that I wanted to show people was with Twitter and then another application called Flipboard, which, which is a way that you can organize some of your social media and some of your news applications. You can create what's called magazines. And so I'm in the process of creating an education weekly for our staff. And this is an example of it. So I can grab articles, links, and so forth from different, different originators, different authors. And then I can put them into a single magazine so that there's a focus on some of the issues that we're working on in Wenuski. And then I can share that with the staff so that they can stay up with current news. So for example, talking about Title I elementary schools and some, some wonderful progress that schools are making and the strategies that they're using. And this is an example of education-themed infographics, which is a way of visually representing the concepts of learning that you want students to get so that they have a visual way of connecting that and coming back to what the learning goals of whatever it is that they're studying. And these are being built and shared all around the world, and this is a way to access them. So, the easiest way to get involved in this, and you, you would never have to tweet if you don't want, is you just go to the website and Firefox works best as a browser for this. And you can just go and look at what's there. See, girls, you're already there. We just took a picture of you singing the Star Spangled Banner and now you're on the front of our website. Okay? So if you wanna open a Twitter account, then you can click on the top there where it says, "Follow Wenuski Learns," and it will run, run you through an account signup. And then you just have to follow Wenuski Learns. And then, pardon?
Already following.
Yeah. And we, we have almost sixty followers now. Students are starting to follow, staff are following. We follow some of the folks that we work closely with, like Burlington School District, Terran Institute, Partnership for Change. And so we're trying to keep it very connected and focused to the work that we do locally. Any questions on the Twitter feed and application?
That's great.
Would encourage you to, to follow it. Either check it out on the website or set it up on your, on your phone so that you can look at it whenever you'd like.
Look at that. Mike's already following.
Are you there?
Look, once he had it on the page, it says, "Follow," and I have an account. Just send it in in your home.
And you were saying you didn't have any.
No, I know how to make an account. How to use it.
We ran out of focus on learning.
I have to follow my children after all.
Catch up.
All right.
All right, thank you, Sean.
So, sorry, one question, Michelle. Are you gonna, is, is this gonna be sort of a school-wide thing? Are you, are teachers gonna have training in how to use it in the classroom?
Eventually. Right now, it's, keeping it simple. We do have teachers who are showing it to students just by going to the website. And of course, we have a variability of, of understanding and use of Twitter across the staff right now. So some people are following and they're staying up to, up to speed with it pretty closely. And others have never tweeted in their life.
Yeah. Well, as you do the one-to-one thing, it'll be interesting to see how students use it. And interesting thing too is that they, I mean, you can do it in any language you want. You don't, you don't, you don't have to wait for a website to be created in Cambodia or whatever.
You can write, you can post in whatever lang- language you want. If you wanna translate your Twitter feed, it has to be in a, you can only translate it in a single language at a time.
Right. I guess what I'm thinking is that language groups, folks who have access and who care to do so can react to things that are going on in the community in their own language in a common form on Twitter.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Anything else? All right. Item three, consent agenda. I would accept the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Someone?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Thank you. And item four, likely the discussion topic of the evening here. We left the last time talking about ends. Ends are, what is it that we as a community want out of, as a result of our students going through the school? What do we, what do we wanna have as, as their outcomes as an end? Not how do we do it, which we've talked about. That becomes the means and how do you actually get it done? So, last time we left, we had discussed the depth, I think, of the statement that we wanted to make. I think Jen, you had kicked it in first and then Julian, I think, came pretty close right behind it with a proposal that we make a statement about ends, but not detail what those ends actually look like with respect to specific curriculum topics, as some of the other examples we had. So, we posted the work that we did the last time where we had finished. And there were two updates made in the shared document to put a relatively final statement on the end statement. Or an exclamation point on it, if you will. And I think we'll start with just reading those two. And then I would like to, before we get done, if we can, get to a point where we actually take action to adopt something for ends. So the first one that we had in here, I think they both start in the same vein because I think we had ended in the same spot. First one was, "All students will graduate from the Wenuski School District, college and career-ready at a cost supported by a majority of the Wenuski community. Wenuski School District students will lead healthy, productive, and successful lives and demonstrate care for their local and global community." The other one was, "All students will graduate from the Wenuski School District, AMBE College, and career-ready at a cost supported by a majority of the Wenuski School District." Those are constants. Wenuski School District students will lead healthy, productive, and successful lives. They will be engaged with their local community and understand its place in and links to the global community." So...
Did you change that?
Didn't.
Do you, is that somewhere, did you write that somewhere?
Those two were on page three, I believe, of the Google Doc that we've been working with, which is entitled Ends Development, two thousand...
Two thousand, August 2013.
August 2013.
There's a J on that second one. Is that because that was my edit?
That was, yeah, that was, that was yours. I just wanted to kinda keep them distinct, not that that's a big deal. Comments and thoughts?
Well, unless anyone feels passionately about the second one, I think the first one actually reads a little more smoothly.
They get both to local and global community.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Which I think is one aspect of, that goes well beyond the general science, math, and other curriculum. But I think it's something critical in our output, if you will. Other thoughts? Adjustments? Things we missed?
The only thing I would ask you is the, the, I mean, they're remarkably similar, I think, in the first two, two pieces. The difference I hear is the demonstrating care and engaged with.
That was just what I was struggling with.
And what that means. And if it's, if it's the difference that you want, or...
I think that everyone demonstrates care so differently. And there's something about engagement which just means connection, in my mind. Like engagement means you are like, you've touched it. You're sort of in, yeah, you're involved in whatever capacity or framework you're given to it. But there's a, there's a ignited something about engagement, demonstrating care, or to demonstrate care. I don't know.
It's true.
To demonstrate care, what?
It's vague. I mean, it's, you know, kind. I mean, I think it's kinda like the quote after, you know, kindness. You know, there's a kindness to it. Maybe there's just a little more action in the engagement piece. But, but there's, there is a, there is a, a diff, you know, there is a touchy, there's a difference. So there's a real difference between the two, two approaches of it.
I think if you had to quantify it, you could quantify engagement somehow, you know. I don't know. Service.
Service hours, projects.
Couldn't, how would you demonstrate care?
Yeah.
I guess it could be the same way, but if you're engaged, you care, but...
Mm-hmm. It's true.
Any last any thoughts?
Would that be the same terseness of the first one? Because I think the first one is basically the same thing. It's just so slightly more direct to the point. Would it be, and, and are engaged in their local and global community? As simple as that?
I like with, you know, like engaged with their local and global community because there's this sort of openness. I don't know, as I, you know, like semantics of it does give these qualities to it.
So let me go there for just a second then, because that is probably one of my bigger concerns. Not concern, is, is one of the thoughts that I've had that I'm trying to get over. And that is the more vague, not the more vague, the higher level, less detail we put into an end statement. Will later, when Sean is going to write up a...
Interpretation.
Interpretation of, "I interpret this to mean." There are a lot of different places he can and probably will go. It'll leave a lot to our understanding, did he hit what we had in ten? So when we leave it like this and take out all of the other items that we had, which are, you know, things like skills of critical thinking and problem solving and actually taking them, putting them in here, that's not something that it will be a specific interpretation of. Right? So just taking critical thinking out, if we don't specifically put that in there. It's in the graduation expectations. It's in the handbook. It's in the, the general overall push for where are we going? So I suspect it'll somehow end up in the interpretation. But it won't probably be as listed as critical thinking. Does that matter, if the interpretation can go that broad?
The, I thought the, I thought we went through this last time. It is supposed to be, it's not broad. It's what we expect. How he gets there. He, he'll give us his interpretations. If they're wrong, then we go back to that working and we say, okay, that's not what we're thinking. But the overall outcome of what we want is a statement. We want our students to be this, this, and this, and this, without going through the whole thing again. If you add anything more to that, then you limit and you're putting expectations on something that may not be there for all students because they all learn differently. So then you're closing up doors. You want it to be broad, so all doors are open and that the administration and the leaders of the school have the opportunity to get to that point of the expectations the way they know how to get them there.
For each child.
For each student, yes.
Multiple ways of getting there.
Exactly. If we close that gap by putting in all these subcategories, or even just a few, we are not, we are closing doors for them to do that.
Jay, can I clarify? Are you talking about the, the bullet points, like the ability to adapt civic community engagement? That piece? Or are you speaking to the demonstrate care or engagement?
Yes, all of that. You want to keep it as broad, as complete of, this is what we expect of a student coming out of Wenuski School District. This is what the community wants of our students. How they get there is up to the administration and the leadership to decide because they know the students more than we do and most of...
The profession.
And the community. I mean, other than that they're the parent. And that's up to them to do it. We can't say, okay, well, we want you to do, show us this by showing us that they're doing this. Well, not every student ma, every student, critical thinking and problem solving is different. And it might not be to the level that can be measured.
Okay.
Because you know you have to measure everything if you're gonna have proof of it.
But not all to the same standard necessarily. But that's where it comes.
But, but, but when you put stuff like that in there, you're closing that door so that there is an interpretation for the leadership of the school to make those decisions.
I guess I, I had a thought along the same lines, and I don't know quite how this ties in. But the, the part of policy governance that talks about the different measurements that we can use. And a report from Sean is one of the ways that we can do it. But we can also use external audits or external data. We can also use direct inspection. For things like, you know, students graduating by whatever method or however, you know, whatever we decide those pathways are, that's a fairly easy thing to externally measure. And it kinda takes interpretation out of it. I think it's really, I mean, he can interpret, but, but there are some specific measurements that are gonna kinda guide that interpretation. College and career readiness, I think, is, is another thing. It can also be externally measured. And I, you know, I don't know, I guess, how that ties into either making things too broad or not broad enough. But I know, Mike, in your last blurb, when you sent out the two, the two things in red and stuff, that one of your things was, you know, how do we measure this? What, I believe I saw something in there saying, you know, what, what's our measurement? Or how do we know if this is actually happening? And I thought that was a great question.
It's a great question, but the reality is, is every student is not measured the same way.
Absolutely.
So you can't put it in there specifically.
I mean, I think the other, the other piece of that is it's not ours to determine what the measurement is.
Right.
That falls to the leadership team.
Is it? Under policy governance?
Yeah.
They measure it.
Yeah, but if we, if we decide we want an external...
With the progress monitoring reports, we look at their interpretation and then the data that they're showing us to determine that they, that it is being met.
But you can also request further data.
Exactly.
Well, or the board can, can, and the board does, in fact, in certain policies, require external measurements.
Financial mostly.
Well, financial mostly, but it doesn't always have to be that way. I mean, that one kinda has to be by law. But, you know, the positive thing on something external is the data is bulletproof, pretty much.
If it's, if it's, if it's a one and zero measure.
Yeah, exactly.
Either you met it or you didn't. Otherwise, things like, I've got forty kids graduating this year. We know they graduate. Their critical thinking skills are on a range like this.
Yeah.
But we don't necessarily, the judgment is where they are compared to where they were.
Yeah.
Right? And that they've, everybody has moved. And so I don't, I think that, and, and that is my, my question about the, the statement of ends only is, we will get an interpretation, we will get supporting data. At that point, it's ours, and maybe this is the answer, at that point, it is ours to say, do we agree with the interpretation? Does it meet the end statement that we made? Does the supporting data, does the data, is the data what we expected? Not, are the numbers what we expected, but is it measuring what we expected? Are we showing improvement? If the answer is no, we have to go back to the policy.
Correct.
We don't go into the data and say, change this or I want that. It is, how do we get it in the policy? So the interpretation is then pulled down. That's, that's the, the next step.
You're trying, you're trying to shorten that loop by making sure we got the right level of details so that we don't have to go back and forth too many times? Is that where you think?
I, I am asking the question, if we, I, I don't, I'm not gonna advocate for a lengthened and a detailed and a bulleted list of things that we want. All I wanna know is that you guys are comfortable that the interpretation, when it comes back, will be against this statement.
Yeah, right.
And the, and the supporting data will be against this statement.
Because this statement is the foundation upon which this all rests.
Absolutely.
I mean, this is the, it's the foundation, yes. The centerpiece.
The expectations of what students will have when they leave these doors.
My, my, my hope would also be that we're all going through this for the first time together. So that along the way, we're having conversations about, okay, so here's some of the data that I would, I would bring at some point as a discussion item and say, here's what I'm thinking about this part of the end statement that I would use. Give me some ideas about if you think that's, that's relevant, or if you have other ideas. So there would be that conversation that happens. It's not just gonna be all of a sudden, here's Sean's interpretation and here's all the data points that I chose with the leadership team. You know, that, that's too much of a big surprise, I think. I think it has to be more collaborative along the way so that when the final report comes out or whatever it is, that it's not, not a big surprise.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's, and it's gonna be a changing thing.
Right.
The end's policy changes every, any, at any given time.
Right. It's not gonna be in cement, as we're saying that, cement.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cement, depending on...
And I have to say, for, for me, and this is me, because I'm a very different thinker, I think, than anybody else on this board. I'm very good with yes or no, black or white. I don't do so well with shades of gray. And there are, and there, well, and there are, right, and there are certain things in this. Like, students will be healthy. Well, that's, you know, that's very subjective and that's nebulous.
I think it is too.
Do you know what I'm saying? But there are certain things that, that you guys have put in there that I think are great. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're very nebulous, they're very subjective, they're very open to interpretation. And everybody's interpretation may be different. And that's okay, but we need to expect that, you know, Sean may come back with some of those things and say, this is what I'm thinking. And members of the board may say, well, that's not what we were thinking.
Right, that's why we're never, for, Julian.
And he may come back, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, if, if we look at what we're really expecting in this statement, there's like, there's five elements, right? So college and career-ready, which is like the big one, right? I mean, you can, you can write, you know, books and miles and, and, you know, thousands and hundreds and millions of pages on that. That's one. Leading healthy lives, you know, is a challenge, but I think, I actually think that was less problematic than productive and successful.
Okay.
Uh, which I'd be very curious to get your interpretation on. Because those are, those are tough, you know? Whereas, it, and, and actually, you, you sort of led me back to the, the phrasing that I modified there. Engage with local community is also something that I think we can, we can determine fairly clearly. Different than care for local and global community because it's tough to put global into the mix immediately as opposed to, you know, just understanding the links between your local community and the, and the global community. So, you know, I'd be curious to know, Sean, if this causes you a little bit of anxiety on the vaguer parts of it, like productive and successful, or if, or if you think this is something that, that would lend... Uh, or if, or if you think this is something that, that would lend itself to some reasonable interpretations.
It doesn't cause me a great deal of anxiety. Uh, successful, you hit on the one, that's the one that I think, I mean, if you look at the research on success, uh, it's all over the place.
Yeah.
So I think that that one would be the, the most challenging, but I think it's also, uh, an aspiration. So it would be great, it's always great to have conversation about what, what is success, what do we think is success? Can we have, um, some of our current students, some of our former students come and talk to us about their lives and the successes?
Yeah.
And is that an indicator? The rest of it, I feel comfortable with. The college and career ready, that is a national discussion that is all over the place right now. So I think that, that is really an evolving one.
But one that I think we could probably figure out for our own community here, I mean, I, I feel like. That one's, that one's one you can, you can certainly draw a line in the sand for, right?
Right.
Here's, here's what it means for us.
Yep.
So a couple of things in listening to your discussions. The global impact that students have is important because of our population.
Right.
And, you know, there's a lot of things, and I know for a fact, my daughter has friends in other countries. Just through Twitter and Facebook and Snapchat and all that. So I think that, you know, that's important to have because all cultures are not the same.
Yeah.
And every student needs an understanding of the diversity.
Right.
And then as far as successful lives, I wouldn't consider that to be anxiety, more as. Somebody's success is based on what they want to do as a student. And since we're doing a lot of our student-led. What they want to do, so our, they're, they're being taught gear towards what they want to be, do to be successful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's gonna look very different for every individual person. So there may be a child that goes through school that not necessarily wants to go to college.
Yeah, right.
But get some of their college credits so that they have the business aspect or whatever to run their own business.
Yeah.
You know, so I think if you don't look at it as a successful billion dollar industry type. Cause that's really what, you know, it tags with it. If you look at it more of just personal success.
Yes.
It's gonna be different for every single person, and I think that'll take a lot of the stress off of how do you show the data for that.
And I think it's a, a great word to crack open about how our, you know, our own, certainly American society views success. It's not a one, but, but we do as a culture sort of paint that narrative in that story about this is successful and this is not. You know, so that the kids can start cracking that open as they're learning through our school system of, so what is successful for you? You know, what does that feel like and what does that look like and what is it, you know, what is it for you?
Yeah.
And that sort of just opens up the whole.
And I think somebody touched on it earlier too. Some of these may be a, a measurement that's done after the student's leave.
Sure.
Six months, a year, year and a half.
And, and certainly within it too, as they're preparing for the college and career ready, but certainly the afterwards.
Yeah.
But it opens up that whole piece to measure yourself.
But I think as we, as we move forward with the I-Lab and all of the current changes, you're gonna find kids really do know what they wanna do when they leave school. It's amazing. I mean, once they hit a certain age, they've got it. And if they have the tools they need to do that, because let's face it, there's kids now that are successful still in high school.
I, I think that that's accurate for some kids. I think a lot of kids think that they know.
I, I agree with that, one hundred percent.
Depends on how much practical experience in the field and how much time they've spent. But at least even a kid who thinks they know, I wanna go do this. It gives them kind of an anchor to go out into the world and experience and then shift and move and they have those skills to do that.
School.
Yep.
You know?
Well, so there's, uh, an element of like self-determination in here that you're kinda hinting at. You know, I mean, what's important is for a student to be able to, to choose and for a student to choose, I mean, to have sort of an idea of focus of some sorts.
And a tool bag, and a tools in their bag to be able to get to where it is they think they wanna be.
Yeah.
Which is the critical thinking, the problem solving and flexibility and, you know.
Persistence.
Well-being.
Well, it's almost like we're saying, you know, be able or, or put some thought into creating like where you wanna end up, a sort of, you know, vision for yourself. Two organizations. Yeah, right.
Starting to get back into memes at that point.
Yeah, well, but I don't know, because I think what we're talking about is, is, you know, can a student. Kinda figure out where they wanna go? Do they have a direction they wanna go and then do they have the tools to get there? I mean, really, it's kind of, it's most basic level. Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna creep into like prescribing how it's done.
Well, what I hear you saying is in my head, I'm thinking all students graduate from WSD, college and career ready via a personalized learning plan, which is in statute. And it's gonna be required and there's a timeline in place for that already.
Right.
Sweet, states are there for us.
Yeah.
It comes, it comes already embedded.
Yeah, right, there's a subtext here. Well, there won't be subtext as you're writing all this.
Right, and then you don't have, then you don't have to get, uh, wrapped around the axel on means.
Yeah.
By putting in multiple pathways or personalized learning plan or whatever.
Yeah.
And then if that changes in a year or two, you're still relatively covered because this probably isn't gonna change much. How you do it may. Alright, so I think, uh.
Can I?
Yep, go ahead.
Can we change show to demonstrate? I don't know why. Is it very good with show?
Show. I just, I just tried to capture the.
You did a great job of that.
Change in the terminology. Yep. Demonstrate.
Demonstrator will be. I, I don't know, yeah.
You could take it out and just say, and engage with.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Let's, yeah, do that. Yeah.
Active construction.
Active construction. Which is passive.
Engage with their local and global community.
Well, now with technology.
Right, right, Jen says, Jen says engage with the globe.
Twitter out and.
I was giving, I was giving them an out, but you know, if you wanna go ahead and engage.
I think it was twenty first century band?
I think that's.
Cause I think.
Global community matters.
Right, I think one of the things that we're talking about here, not saying specifically though, is this should not be something. That we can actually meet a hundred percent.
Right, right.
This should be an aspiration, as Sean mentioned. This should be, where do we wanna end up? And if where you wanna end up is only here, when you really should be here, you shortchange yourself. Now, does not reaching the exact top matter? It's the progression. And I think that's the thing that we key on as we move through time.
Right.
Is how does that, how does that continue to move?
Where's the baseline and where do we move every year after that?
And then, I guess if we have a right baseline, you know.
Yeah, well, right.
You know, but that's, okay. I could be had for certainly not putting in the rest of the detail for that discussion, for sure. I can, uh, I, I gotta, I wanted to ask the question though, because it's something that, that. I think I'm, I'm more along the lines with Jay of getting more ones and zeros than, you know, grayscale. But I can, I can be had.
Who I am.
That's why you're not, you're wearing a gray shirt tonight though.
Yes, but it is clearly delineating between the white areas and the gray areas.
So with that, before we end up in a ditch.
Can you read it one more time?
Yep, yep, that's where I was gonna go. So what I've got then is, uh, all students will graduate from the Winuski School District. College and career ready at a cost supported by a majority of the Winuski community. Winuski School District students will lead healthy, productive and successful lives and engage with their local and global community.
Cool.
Okay, I like it.
Yeah.
I like it. Short, sweet.
Subjective change, of course, over time with due process and everything else that we do, but. Alright. That sounds good then.
Wow.
So I think in the.
Go on then, everyone.
Interest of, uh, any other discussion on what and where and?
So just to recap, so this, we, we, this gets approved, this goes back to the leadership team. You guys do some thinking about this, figure out how to incorporate your annual plans into something that reflects reporting on this. That comes back up to us for the interpretation. It's sort of an iterative process between your team, the board, back and forth. Eventually it gets boiled down into a plan of some sort and then we look at that and that's, that's sort of the basis for the discussion.
And, and the, the challenge with that right now is there are many, many plans already in play.
Okay.
And so how do we start steering those plans towards this if they're not already moving in that direction?
Right. And then is, is the idea here that, that we would have like annual reviews, semi-annual reviews? How, what's the cycle?
I think through time, the answer is annual reviews, but I think Sean had mentioned it earlier. As we start moving through here, I gotta believe we're gonna have checkpoints as we go through every couple of months with. You know, we're, we're looking at this, cause I think there's a lot of good things going on in the school right now that fit directly into here.
Sure.
And so it's just a function of pulling them together to understand is this, does this piece fit? How does it fit? This is a, this is one of the, the, uh. Measurements or, or metrics that we're looking at using. Does this meet what you think you had in mind? The one that's driven me, the, the one when I started on the board for the first year and a half or two years. One of the goals was student engagement. And in the package, for all the admin team that brought them forward, there was attendance data. Which basically says, I came to school, I was engaged. I don't think so. I can come to school and be completely disengaged.
Right, right.
But, so, so that one has bothered me a, as far as, you know, what is that interpretation? Cause we never really got back into the, the discussion of what is being engaged really mean.
Right, right.
And so I think this is gonna sharpen that a little bit and get a little better to that, to that point.
And so this will also be on the progress monitoring schedule. In a way, but then pieces will kinda show up along the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think what would be important, from my perspective, what would be important is that we, cause this is big, there's a lot of elements to it. Is that we think about, how are we gonna look at the elements? Are we gonna have one big report where we look at all of them K-12? Or are we kinda, kinda pick the college ready piece for one presentation, the, the career ready piece? Um, you know, healthy, productive piece, the community, you know. I, I mean, I always feel like it's better to do smaller pieces and do them in depth than it is to try and, you know, do a thousand things an inch deep.
See, and that's where the, all the sublines that everyone came up with will come in handy.
Right.
Because that's where all of that falls in underneath the ends is.
Yep, so we will, yeah, so we'll be looking to adopt an end statement, which will be our ends policy. It will be the one dot O in our policies, which is noticeably missing in the book right now. It starts with two.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of begs the question, where did one go? So we'll incorporate that into one. Um, if, of, of course, we adopt it, which we'll look at in a second. And then, uh, we can, as we move forward, especially over this first year, I think it's gonna be crucial to get the, the understanding and the timing. I think breaking it down would make sense. Sean and I can work on that as we do the agendas through, through the year to see where it might fit. Cause that's the one piece again in the annual agenda, it's a little bit of a blank right now. How do you incorporate that into an annual agenda? We can do that when, as we move forward. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. That was, uh, that was good. So I would accept a motion to accept the ends policy as written. As we ed- uh, edited it here tonight.
So moved.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the ends policy? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Great. Thank you. Onto five, which is, uh, global executive restraint. Which is a discussion of financial planning and budgeting and the timetable. And I will turn it to you.
So if everybody wants to go to five A of their packet entitled budget development timetable for FY fifteen. Kinda go in order and review those docs. Um, so in working with finance director Rebecca Goulet, we developed, uh, a timetable. And this is based on also our internal, um, timetable for, um, getting the budget ready. So what we're proposing to the board is that November thirteenth, which would be a regular board meeting time. At, at the end of that meeting, you'd be furnished with a baseline budget. And in that, within that baseline budget, there would be a list of assumptions, which if you go to the next page. These would be all of the things that would already be incorporated into that baseline. So that we're all on the same page with what's in the budget and what's not in the budget. Um, and many of these things are the things that fluctuate year to year. Or the things that we don't even have a firm number on when we're building the budget. Like in a negotiated agreement, like healthcare costs. So we would give you on November thirteenth, that baseline. That baseline budget would not be fifty pages or a hundred and fifty pages or whatever you have gotten in the past. But it would be a higher level document, um, with a function and an object summary. So that you could see, um, the amount of professional services that, uh, we're proposing in the budget across the entire organization. You could see what we're proposing to spend, uh, in English and in science. In the administrative areas, but it wouldn't be necessarily the, the, all of the detail behind that.
Could we get one with all of that detail if we desired it?
You could certainly get it if you so desired. And for a kind of an idea of what that would look like. The next set of documents are what I'm also proposing to give to you for quarterly financial management, management reviews. But if you go to the one that is entitled, uh, uh, financial management report expenditures. That would be similar to what you would see in that baseline budget.
This is on page four.
So you'd have the instructional programs, like I said, English, uh, you know, PE and so forth. Um, and then you would have the instructional support in the administrative areas as the, the large overarching areas. And then the detail that you see there. And you would, um, have the baseline budget with a comparison of year to year. So you'd have an idea of what things are changing. So then back to the timetable, after you've gotten that, step two would be on, uh, December fourth. We would be doing a, uh, presentation for you and beginning with mission, vision, ends. Uh, which is always important to review that, uh, so that we know what the dollars are for and what we are proposing to use them to, uh, the outcomes to meet. We would talk about the significant increases and decreases. If there was any new, um, positions, ads or anything, those would be brought forward at that point with rationale. Uh, I would have, uh, support services, student support services director, Robin Hood here, to talk about special education. Um, and ELL, and then Rebecca Goulet would also be here to do presentations on operations and, um, IT. So then what would happen, we would have discussion and conversation, clarifying questions and so forth during that. And, um, I would take all of that input back. And then the following week on December ninth, we would come back with a budget that reflects, um, the discussion from that first meeting. And give an overview of whatever changes have occurred, uh, any updated information that may have come our way in the, in that week's time. And then, uh, the week after, that same week on the eleventh, we would have, uh, preliminary revenue. And the agency's three-year comparison, so we could start looking at perpu- for, forecasted people expect, uh, expense. Um, uh, tax impact and so forth. Then, uh, after that, if needed, uh, we would, again, with utilizing all of the discussion. Come back with, uh, a sharpened, uh, third version of the budget, uh, mid-December. And then, uh, the next step would be bringing it, uh, to the board in early January. When hopefully we have almost all of the numbers that we need as firm as possible, uh, for an adoption. And then step four is all of the, the pieces that we need to do to get it ready for the vote.
May I ask a question? The December dates, would we still engage members of the community to sit at the table with us?
Yes, I was gonna poke a plug for that here.
Yeah, so that, that's at that time, right there.
Absolutely, and I, I would recommend.
Starting November thirteenth, I would think, at the regular meeting, just so that they start right at the beginning.
That'd be great.
And that's why I wanted to get the timetable ahead, so then you, when you call and say, hey, will you be my budget buddy? Here's the dates and times that we'd like you to be there, cause it's important to have the people there at the table for all the meetings, so they get the.
So explain that just briefly, uh, because that, that's, that's not something we've used in that fashion, the budget buddy. Just, just to.
Um, well, it's something that, that, um, boards I've worked with in the past have done. And it is getting a, a community member. and it is getting a, a community member, uh, to come and sit through the budget process. And that way they learn in depth about the budget, and so you're now doubling the number of people who have a, a deeper knowledge of the budget that can go out into the community and talk to their neighbors and, um, answer questions that people have in the community, uh, about the budget. And it's, you know, it's accomplishing also one of your goals and engaging the community.
What we've done in the past is sent out a blanket note that says, come and join us if you would like. And I think we've gotten two or three people.
And sometimes four, I was on, that was before I came on the board, I was on, there was four. But it was, it was that of, of, of just having a different set of eyes. We didn't necessarily frame it in terms of a budget buddy, but they certainly were there as extra eyes to say, like, wait, tell me more about this, or, and just sort of help gauge things.
This would force you to go out and at least make sure we've each got somebody that we could say we've now got fi- at least five people, rather than potentially two, three, or four.
So we would each go out and recruit one.
Plus, anybody that el- anybody else that wants to come, right? I mean, we, we wouldn't turn anybody down. So a generic plug is for anybody that wants to join us, getting the budget prepared. November thirteenth, regular board meeting will be the first. And the rest of the agenda is, or the proposed agenda here, date-wise, is laid out in the uh, agenda items for the meeting tonight. So, and we will be forthcoming with more information soon.
Yeah, but I think it is effective, you know, if you, uh, to, you all know people in the community, is to reach out personally, uh, and invite somebody and say, you know, we'd like to have you come on these dates and be a part of the whole process. You know, and then you'll always have people who come, because they go, oh, technology's gonna be on there, I got some questions for that one. But to have those people there throughout the entire process, so they can understand it. And they go back out into the community and they say, wow, this is a really, uh, you know, exhaustive, important process that we go through to decide how we're gonna support our students.
Anything?
Just, I'd like just to throw out some input from the VSBAs regional meeting. Because budgetary, healthcare and budgetary concerns were both brought up, um, regionally and, and they've given us some feedback, um, from the state house of what's happening. Vermont educationally and budgetarily is, has been squeezed in the past, and they see that pressure continuing. The VSB has recommended as much as possible and is recommending to boards around the state that if they can keep it as close to three percent or less as possible, they understand some budgets are what they are. You know, some budgets are gonna go up quite a bit around the state, other ones won't. But they're using that as a magical number. So I'll throw that out there as feedback from our local, our state, um, rep from the Vermont School Boards Association.
Meeting, try to cap it at three?
Keep as close to three as possible, because, um, they're saying some things are happening and this have happened in the past in the state house and are gonna continue to happen, um, legislatively to try to control costs. And student.
We did really well last year.
And we did very well last year. We've done well the last probably five years, folks. Um, and Wunuski community members, you can look around the state if you don't believe that, because the data, black and white, is there, um, that we have a very reasonable budget, um, compared to other schools in Chittenden County and compared to quite a few schools around the state, we're very reasonable. But again, that feedback is there.
So ju- just to tie that back into our annual agenda and some things that we're doing a little bit differently this year, one of the pieces that we do have in here is advocacy. And in our December meeting, we will be inviting our, our state reps in here to go through some of this stuff. We'll have some information on the budget that night. And so it'll be for our input to them as well as their either feedback or whatever else to us as we go through time, so.
Fantastic.
We will have, have that, uh, in place as we go forward too, so.
Okay, so we good with the timetable and the assumptions? Any questions about those two docs?
Yep, and just a, a note on the assumptions piece, we are negotiating a couple of other contracts at this point too, so that's kind of a little bit open-ended, we'll have those, uh, assumptions work through as we move through time here.
So the second, uh, bullet there under global executive restraint is overview of, uh, the FMR docs. So this is the, Rebecca and I's first shot at a, uh, quarterly review for the board. And so I'm looking for your, uh, feedback on this, if it makes sense to you, if it's, uh, formatted in a way, if it's at the level of detail, uh, that you desire or not. So really the first page is, is, uh, the written summary and.
Page three in the document, a PDF document.
Entitled, uh, Financial Management Review First Quarter. And it talks about expenditures and revenues, um, and really there is where we will characterize any, um, fairly significant swings that have occurred, that you'll, you would see in the, um, charts themselves. But so, when you read that first and then you go look at the charts, you'll notice, um, those areas. So for instance, uh, right now, uh, our special ed costs, uh, have increased over the budget because we've had some students move into the district, um, that we're serving. And then on the revenue side, uh, it also talks about that we've had to adjust the revenue for the same reason. And some, uh, projected shortfall in bank interest and so forth. So the summary here for the general fund and the, uh, the reserve fund, which talks, um, about the parking lot project and the, the money that's encumbered there and will be paid or revealed.
So as I understand this, then, uh, the, under the expenditures, there is an additional expense based on some students that have moved into the district. But with that moving in, there's also a revenue in impact, because there's an increase in funding.
Yes, the reimbursability is, is categorized as a revenue, right.
I have, I have a question, Sean. So we will not be getting a TAN for FY14?
Nope, that's what I understand.
And so with no TAN, I mean, there's no concern about fiscal shortfalls in the beginning of the fiscal year?
No, not with the, uh, reserve fund that we have.
Explain a bit on the tax anticipation.
Well, normally the, you can explain, you're the superintendent.
Just, just to get the, the definition on the table and a common understanding, if you would.
Um, it's a note to cover any shortfall that you might have at the end of the fiscal year.
Correct. Normally what happens in the district is we get a tax anticipation or a TAN, and it's funding for the beginning of, it's a very short-term loan. It's funding for the beginning of the year before we start to collect money from the ed fund and from the city. City collects taxes and the ed fund sends money from the state. It's basically startup money to get us going. And.
And the reimbursements refill.
The reimbursements, refill and pay off the TAN. So I guess my only question is, so we're okay spending reserve fund money to do those type of?
We're not counting on having to spend that reserve fund money, but if we need to, we have it, we have adequate reserve fund.
But that's not in the plan upfront, you see a path without.
Right.
And are the, uh, the increase in expenditures and the increased revenues one-to-one, is that just a wash, uh, or not quite?
No, because, uh, special education costs are not reimbursed at a hundred percent. So it depends, it, up to the first fifty thousand is, is, uh, somewhere in the fifty percent reimbursable. And then fifty to a hundred is at ninety percent.
Right, so it's a little more red.
So the first page is the summary, the second page is the expense side, broken out as I described before, and it gives you, uh, all those different columns, um, with a projected variance to the end of the budget and, uh, end of June.
And again, that's page four in the PDF file.
And then the revenue side on the next page. And then the grants and miscellaneous, because we have, uh, a significant, um, amount of money in the, in that budget with the grants that we receive.
I like this layout. Makes it really clear.
Okay, good.
Terms of revenues, expenditures, grants.
And then the last piece is the, uh, reserve account. So you would get this packet quarterly.
Great. So now the, the money is going to, the extra money at the end of the fiscal year is gonna start being booted by the community, whether it goes into the reserve account or back into the school?
My understanding is we will generate a list of items to put on the ballot of options to, of things to do with that money. And then folks will vote on what they wanna do with that.
Is that for all of the reserve account, or is that just going forward?
New, new funds, moving forward.
So this projected balance is not that included in that?
Right, that would be the balance at the end of FY13 that we would be looking at. And I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand.
Right around a hundred, yes.
So at some point along the way, between now and February, probably January, just to keep it off the end, we have to come up with a list of what are those things that we would wanna put on the ballot as options for that money? Because you can roll it into the fu- the next year's budget. We can put it in a reserve fund toward things like, uh, a boiler study or things that we know we got big expenses coming within the next four to six years or something.
But the public still needs to approve that, right?
That if, the pub- absolutely, to, to do that. And, and, you know, that would be something that would be, you know, looking forward rather than having to pull a bond out for, you know, a million dollars to do the boiler work. Do we do that, it's, you know, do we do something like that? So.
And so one of the things we do during the budget cycle is we have a, a maintenance plan. And we had an audit done, uh, recently. And so we would bring to you the priority list and the costs associated with that. And so then you're, you would consider those and decide, you know, do we wanna do some of these, all of these, none of these? And, and/or do we wanna use some of that money for another purpose?
So, I guess I'm confused then, because I thought we did that last year with the budget. We had set aside money that we, we pulled stuff out of the budget to ensure that the reserve account was going to pay for like unit ventilators.
That's correct.
Um, I'm looking at some of the stuff here on this list. Had they been done? Because the money from the reserve account last year was supposed to pay for those things, the parking lot project being one. That's all I see here as an expense, but I thought we were having the unit ventilators, was it unit ventilators?
We had some work on the unit ventilators done last year, but in, I believe they finished JFK.
They have finished JFK and the middle school, I believe are both done. That's correct.
So that was done at the end of last year, they did some work in the gym for the safety.
They did, but I, in this rapport, it's probably, it's, it's passed. I believe it's already come on a previous rapport.
So then it's already been pulled out, this is what's left?
Right, correct.
That's what I wanna make sure.
Yeah.
And, and some of those projects may have been able to been done at the end with, when you have a, a, a clear idea of what your balance is gonna be, you can sometimes do some of those smaller projects in May and June in, uh, last year's budget. So, any other feedback on the, on the FMR format information? Comfortable with that?
I'm, uh, well, well, any other thoughts? I think I lays it out fairly clearly with the expenditures, the receipts, the grants, shows where you are in relation. So.
Okay.
So I think that's, uh, I think that's a nod that, uh, the format works.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's, uh, does better for my head than fifty or sixty pages, at least for, for what I need. All right? Anything else?
Not for me.
All right. So item six then is a discussion on, uh, the board job description, uh, creating and maintaining written governing policies that realistically address the broadest levels of all organizational decisions and situations. This was, uh,
I'm gonna take that?
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, so this came out of last month's discussion, um, about how do we change a policy? So if we come upon something and we say, hmm, we really wanna review this policy and, and check it out and see if it's really what we want it to, to look like. And so, um, I don't know what page number that is called, but you have a document that has a list of all of our policies on it and with its numbers, and then the last time that the board approved those policies. And starting with the oldest policies and moving towards the more current ones. So what I'm suggesting is a, uh, recommending is a, a policy review cycle that you start with the oldest ones, and you can decide how many policies you would like to kind of pick off per meeting. And you would have a, a first reading of that policy, get it in your agenda packet and have some discussion. You'd have a public hearing, so it'd be available for the public to come and weigh in on the policy. And then at the following meeting, you would, um, after incorporating the public hearing information and any input that the board has on their, their first reading, um, there would be an, there would be adoption.
So this is for the required policies, not the, the, um, policy governance policies. So these, this is the list of the required ones from the state. We did a lot of work over the last two years in trying to clean some of those up.
Two thousand eleven to twelve.
The policy governance piece, so one of the, one of the questions with this, um, quantity, and you know,
It's on June.
Julian, you hadn't seen it, basically we just read down through the policy, discuss it. Uh, Sean will bring in legal requirement update, required, legally required updates already incorporated. Uh, we'll review it to see if it meets what we still need and that it lines up with the legal requirements. Then we'll come back for a second reading and an approval, and then for all of these. So, uh, uh, just guessing, there's what, twenty-five?
Without counting down through them?
Um, the question is gonna be on what review cycle annually, every two years, every three years would make the most sense to hit these with? With, uh, we'll call it a dozen meetings a year, just because you can work around the July one that we may or may not have. Uh, every two years is throwing in one policy in every meeting.
So you've got about, you've got twenty-seven policies there.
And so with a three-year cycle, you cut that back to having some months, because you're gonna have to have a reading and a review and then an approval. So if you do a two, if we do a two-year cycle, it'll be a reading and a review of one of these required policies pretty much every month, unless you wanna double and triple them up and take the time to do that.
I imagine some of these are gonna be pretty quick and others are gonna take a little more time?
Yes.
Right, I mean, they're not all.
Right.
Time to discussions or something.
Right. And one of the, one of the, the helpful, uh, pieces from VSBA is that they have model policies. So what I would be doing when, uh, sending you the policy in your agenda packet, you get a copy of a model policy too, so you can kind of do a comparison in addition to if there's any, um, legal updates that need to be incorporated.
There are also some of these policies that I believe are required to be reviewed more frequently.
Than, oh, you mean just than others?
Parental involvement, I believe at least, at the very minimum, needs a parental review annually under Title I, Section eleven eighteen. So whether that has to come before the board at the same time, because technically we're supposed to review that policy with the involvement of parents. So which, some of us on this board are parents, so we would automatically qualify. But it does talk about annually, so there are more requirements than just us setting dates for some of the, I think that's the only one that I know of. You, Sean, you know of any others that have more frequent cycles?
I don't know of any others off the top of my head, but I could definitely check that out, uh, with VSBA and see if there's others.
I would say we need to get those first few done sooner rather than later.
Mm-hmm, yeah, first five.
Especially the first one.
Six, yep.
Right. Yeah, different world.
And then, I would base it on the agenda for the month.
What there is there already.
Yeah, like if you have a late agenda, put a couple on it that need to be up.
Yeah.
If we're gonna say annually, then every year we look at them and say, okay, this one, this one, this one needs to be reviewed this year. Implemented throughout the year based on the agenda.
Yeah, so I was just looking at in the agenda, there are, there are spots to be able to do that as we go through, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, and and maybe we wanna, we've always done two readings on a policy, but I believe by law, we're only required one. Reading. Um, you know, things in my eyes, and I could be totally wrong here, cause I don't know the rest of the members of the board that well, but things like animal dissection. How much are we gonna change that? I I mean, and we may, but I know there are certain requirements under state law, but that's kind of a, you know, I hate to say we're rubber stamping it. But by the same token, what really is gonna change in that?
Well, I think that the one piece, and I think that the argument for some of these going annually is if there are any legal requirement changes, that should be. The V S B A will probably help get us to the point where you can, you know, pretty quickly identify which ones those are. And then the changes are pretty much directed as to what you need in there. So.
So it sounds like we would have sort of a regular slow cycle and that in the middle of, like say that three-year cycle, that's an appealing number. Uh, and then in the midst of that cycle, we would have things that would bubble up to the top a little more quickly, so things that changed. Uh, that the V S B A would give us a notice about and also things that require a more frequent review like, like the one you mentioned. And I guess the third criteria would be just something that that needs some reviewing, either because of the 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 age of the thing. Or uh, because of the topic.
What current circumstances?
Current circumstances and contextual things, so um, so legal changes. Frequent review by statute requirement.
Right.
And then uh, and then sort of contextual uh, stuff.
Okay, I mean, I I guess I feel if we feel as a board, we need the time to go through several readings. I mean, we've gone through as many as three readings on a policy before we've, you know, we've had some we've really hashed out. But there have been other ones that were just like, okay, that's.
Done.
It's done because it's all based on a state or a federal requirement. There's not a whole lot of changes we're gonna make to it.
And and I think one of the things we keep track of with the number that we do have here is what was that time? So the second time around, it was, can you know, can we knock these off in two years and? Hit them, touch them more frequently, which makes sure you are in fact there.
Right.
If it's a, if it's a read and, a read and approve. There's probably half of those that we can get through in one meeting if we really pushed.
Yeah.
So, we'll keep an eye on that as we go through, maybe just another column in your. Table to, you know, um, efficiency with the particular ones.
So, so who would, who would put them up for a discussion, would it be you or would it be Sean?
Think we'd do that together.
We set it up in the agenda.
Right, so you guys would eyeball it depending on how much time we have and according to those priorities that we talked about and then.
Well, what I would suggest is maybe for next month, what we do is at our agenda planning, we do that and we bring back the the cycle. To the board, for you to look at and, you know, give the go-ahead. That says here, we suggest these with these, you know, these dates over the course of these three years and this is why. You know, we chose these, this one has to be annual, this one.
Yeah, and oh, by the way, access to electronics hasn't been done in thirteen years. Things are changing, we'll probably tackle that one.
Yeah, that's remarkable. That's really significant.
Okay, so we can, we can definitely do that. Doing them all in one year, some of these are gonna be, end up being a little older than others by the time we start to get to them. We hopefully can get on that cycle where there's no more than three years old. So everybody okay with a, at least upfront a three-year cycle?
Yeah, I think that's.
We can find out what.
The V S B A recommends no more than five. So if you're under five, we're, and and again, following statute changes and stuff like that, if you're under five, generally you're pretty good.
When we had eighty, five years was a daunting task.
Oh, yeah, unbelievable.
A little better under control, and we've got obviously the policy governance ones that we gotta work with too, but. Those I think we've got a handle on, at least how we're gonna move forward with those, so.
Well, and with three-year cycles, if, you know, for whatever reason the agenda gets loaded for a particular meeting, you can bump it to the next one and it's not the end of the world. So I think three years makes a lot of sense.
Okay, good, so we will put that together in our. Plan on how we would think that that might move forward best. Alright, um, six B, I had it put. Uh, previously in here under the governance processes, actually under the annual agenda. The VHI and Abisbit, the proxy and certificate of authority, that was in the model that I had used. So I left it in there and it is.
Did you, did you guys, Mike, could you just show that thing on the? Did, did, both the board members, did everybody get one of these, Jen, I gave you one at the game.
Yeah, I have it.
Yes, that was from the regional meeting, so, um, and I don't know where you're going with Visbit or VHI, Mike, so I'll, I'll stop talking, but. Just, you know, feel free to peruse through that and, um, you know, it's some very good information. It was an unbelievable meeting. Um, and a lot of times our regional meetings have a certain amount of fluff, this one was not the case. Um, the amount of information that they gave us in two and a half, three hours was unbelievable. Um, I mean, I was overwhelmed and I eat that stuff right up, so. So it was really good, this is definitely worth reviewing, um, and it's something that's gonna be a a very hot topic in the near future.
Okay, so this is good, all the PowerPoint.
Yep.
Other items, okay. Good, thank you. So, uh, having that, Sean, and I thank you for for doing that, there were a couple of uh. A couple of items that needed some. Uh, attention for uh, the proxy or certificate of authority for both VHI and. The insurance trust of Abisbit. And uh, I think if I understood these correctly, this is uh. Who we will have as a. Uh, authority on, or not an authority, but a a contact. I see Mary's uh, name listed here, so. Um, I will look through the rest of this and then, and figure out what the, what the details are, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I think it's either when you, whether you wanna have a, designate a a particular person to go and vote on behalf of the board. For both, in, at both of those organizations' annual meetings, or you wanna proxy the board of the particular organization to.
I think in the past, the reason why it hasn't come is we've done the proxy in the past and let the the governing body work through it. That they, they elect a board of directors and and everything else as they go through, but both meetings happen to be in Lake Maury while we're there for the. V S B A conference at the end of October.
Yeah, it happens every year, I've never been to the Visbit, VHI meeting. Cause a lot of times, it happens during the board's annual meeting down there, so. The superintendents usually go to the Visbit thing and the school board members go to the annual meeting of the school board.
And I haven't seen, I mean, I haven't had, we haven't had any that I know of, real issues with either of the two. So it's, it's, seems to be run real well at this point, so. So that was, that was included in the annual agenda, it's always good, I think, to at least just bring it up to.
Does everybody know, know what Visbit and VHI is? Visbit is, um, it's a insurance trust. Um, that was developed some years ago that a lot of schools use for their insurance needs. Simple, um, VHI is actually a sort of an arm of Visbit. And and I hope I'm being accurate with this, but it also has, that board of directors has, um, representatives of boards. And elected uh, people, but it also has members of the union as well. And that comes out of some years ago, there was a lawsuit about, you know, the unions being involved with their insurance. When you see things come from VHI, it's basically been blessed by both organizations, which is really, really kinda neat. It's been very collaborative and very cooperative over the last twenty years or so.
VHI is Vermont Education Health Initiative.
That's correct.
And Visbit is the insurance trust.
That's correct.
We do all of our, I believe all of our insurance through Visbit.
Yeah, I do believe so.
Like all insurance, all like, we're not talking health insurance, we're talking liability and.
Well, there.
No, health intent, medical intent.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, gotcha, 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 so that, well, that's sort of, there must be some stuff going on down there these days that's pretty interesting.
Well, that's what, that's what this was all about, was the Affordable Care Act and, like I say, it's. You know, I'll, I'll stay out of the weeds for what it means to everyone under negotiations, I won't mention that. Um, but, um, there are major changes coming.
Yeah.
Um, and what's gonna happen and how that's gonna affect everybody, really still to this day is uncertain.
Unknown.
It is unknown.
So costs up, costs down, nobody knows.
Nobody really knows. And that was after three and a half hours, they told us that. And I walked out of there, and I walked in, I thought, oh boy, I'm gonna learn all about the Affordable Care Act. And they gave me tons of information and it was helpful. Um, but I walked out with really not knowing, it's still evolving. You know, and it's still evolving for schools and it's still evolving for businesses and nobody really knows what's gonna happen here. So. Time will tell.
Alright. Any other discussion? Uh, community engagement, last time we had talked about leaving a portion of the agenda to have. A brief discussion of things that we've done within the community. As we've moved through the past month, so just, I think, a a brief example, one would be the I-Lab. Approvals, acceptance cycle, meeting that we had, it was good to see, I think there were at least thirty, thirty kids, thirty-five kids. Uh, come, parents, uh, listed all the projects that the kids were working on. For, for those that don't recognize it, the I-Lab is uh, an individualized course description. Uh, that kids are working on, I wanna learn more about this. Um, and there were a wide range of, of items to, to look at. Just, just as a very brief, by way of brief example, uh, the senior project. I'm sorry, the senior project is something that we've had in place for a long time. And it requires the kids to go out and do some research, get community engagement, get involved with the community. Uh, my son is interested in two paths he would like to pursue, uh, but he's not sure exactly which one yet that he would like to to go after. One is in business and the other one is in law, so his senior project, he's focusing on the business end of it. To take in to get in into the community to talk to folks about, you know, some aspects of that. In his I-Lab, he's actually researching law, different types of law, going out and seeing different types of lawyers. Hopefully shadowing of several different ones, or at least having a chance to sit down and talk with them about their career, um, and their views. So that he can now have a view of of both, that's just one avenue for this I-Lab. It, there are uh, items in art, photography, um, but all of it requires research.
And a key one is there are course requirements in it also.
Right, right, like my son's gonna end up having to write a paper and do the research, so.
No, I mean, like, credit, like, there's, you can design your own English class.
Right.
And your own, uh, social studies, is that what they call it now? Social studies class, and the students are able, if they're not finding that core class in their schedule, they are able to go into the I-Lab. And with the help of the teachers, create what kind of English class they're going to take and have the plan set in place of the books and the projects. And it involves community, um, internships and, I mean, it's, but it's for that major course requirement.
So, pretty interesting.
It's very interesting, it's great, it was great to, I've been there, was there too, and it was awesome to see the enthusiasm of the students and the. Just the, I don't know what the right word is, the ownership and, you know, the. They own it and they're proud of it and they're very excited about it, which is awesome to see for students. Especially our school students, very engaged.
They're not only here.
And you know what, to be in the I-Lab, you have to show engagement or you won't be accepted. So, I mean, it's really based on student engagement and showing that they are serious about doing this on their, it's, cause it's, a lot of it is.
Self-directed, yeah, right, and not everyone is a great self-director, so.
Well, they have to be approved and they have to show the initiative or they don't continue. There's a certain point where they're, it just either moves forward or it doesn't.
Yeah, great.
It was a, it was a good night to see all the parents uh, involved too, so. That was one item.
And even students came without their parents. So I know a few students that were here without their parents, so that was awesome to see.
I think they got credit for it, but I'm not sure.
Some things you have to, some things you have to work with. Do we have a PAX meeting?
Coming up, October seventeen. Yep, district wide.
First one?
First district one, yes. Six to nine.
Anything, any other?
Did anyone go to the dinner?
I, the partnership had changed, yeah, I did, I did, Sean was there. It was, it was kinda, it was small, certainly compared to others, but there was still a good turnout.
I think it was, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Somebody or something else happening.
I went to the I-PAD parent meeting.
Was that the same night?
No, that was during a Saturday afternoon.
How was that?
It was good. It was very informational, the kids, again, very engaged, very excited, can't wait, I'm just like. It's awesome, it's awesome what they can do with it, I mean. It touches that global. Community, you know, it's really awesome to see what they can do with those things.
So there's another community dinner coming up next week, right? Anybody interested in going, should we tag it out, is that what we do here in the community engagement piece? D V L. D V L jobs.
Yeah, at least get it out into the.
Is that the seventeenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Mm-hmm, Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Oh, it's on Wednesday.
At the, um, i- is there a subject or a topic on, or a, a sponsor group?
I don't s- I don't have it, not front of me.
Is, is that a building, woman? From, who was it, Kate Nugent?
Yeah, she's the one who organizes them, yeah.
Yeah, it usually shows up on front, 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 one, okay.
I mean, see if I, I'll get a note off to Kate tonight, just to see if, uh, where.
The one at the school or the one at the O'Brien Center?
The O'Brien Center?
O'Brien Center.
It's at the O'Brien.
That's where they're, I'm having them. I can send Kate a note just to find out, not that it. Uh, matter to that, see if we can find out the subject. Alright, good. Anything else? Alright, any items for the next agenda that might be outside of or in addition to whatever next agenda might be?
Uh, negotiations?
Uh, yes, we have uh, an initial. Uh. Interaction with that coming up at some point with uh, both, both groups. And we'll set that schedule to figure that out, so.
Are we gonna appoint a committee or?
Well, we've got a negotiating committee from the, that which we appointed in March, that'll, that'll go through until March.
I thought that was just for teachers?
Nope, this is a negotiating committee, depending on who's, of what negotiations have to happen.
Never the way we've done it in the past, but.
Oh, really, I thought our committees were the year-long assignments.
No, they, they're specific to, i- it's been in the past and and I don't care if you two guys do it. But it's always been specific to the, to the task, we've had separate ones for the IAs and the teachers.
Okay, I I had made the assumption that we were gonna go with the committees that we adopted in March and they were a year-long.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, it's just, there are two types of committees under Robert's rules, there are standing committees. And then there are special committees. The difference between the two and the reason why school boards really don't have standing committees is board turnover. And ten new board members and everything else, so you're constantly, once with a special committee, once the task is complete. The committee automatically dissolves.
Right, and that would be the negotiations for the year, that, that was my interpretation, it would be for the.
I don't, I don't know, I, I know when we originally appointed, I, I just remember negotiations, I don't remember teachers or IAs or. I I know when we originally appointed, I I just remember negotiations, I don't remember teachers or IAs or anything else.
Right.
I thought we redefined this at our annual board meeting, when we, um, appointed Mike for partnership with the steering committee, that we sort of had the review of who was doing what, and we were all kind of in agreement on that.
That that's a, that was our March meeting, right, when our new members.
No, I'm talking about the August one.
Yeah.
We we went over the list, and so we looked at who had, who had what, and that we were sort of, you know, making sure we divvied out.
Right, but. But when we specifically appointed committees, did we appoint them to do all negotiations? Or was it negotiations for teachers, or was it negotia-?
I thought it was negotiations for teachers, and then it seemed to me, that's my remembering of it, and then it seemed to me that as, um, someone wasn't available, there was always a sub.
Right.
And then we just sort of revisited, are you still in for that, or?
That's what I'm saying, teachers and support staff are different different bargaining groups, that's why I'm asking the question.
Oh, totally, but it was still a nego- I just saw it under the negotiation umbrella.
Okay, well, I don't I don't recall that, that's not the way, well, we can have a discussion about that next month, I suppose, where they.
Well, don't we need to?
I think we're gonna be starting.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna be starting here pretty quick, cause they've already given us a letter.
So so are we gonna discuss in executive session what our strategies are?
Nope, that's not uh, tonight's discussion.
No, we're deciding, I thought the discussion, I mean, just making sure we're confirming who was on the negotiation team.
Who's going to be on the team?
Right.
I thought that was what you're asking.
Yeah.
Right, but but even that team gets direction from the rest of the board as far as how we're gonna proceed in negotiations.
Correct. So can we define, can we just all agree, or, I don't think, but can we just keep the team that was your prime?
Yeah, I I don't I don't care, I'm just.
And was it you and Mike?
Not too many.
That's where.
You two, oh, right, you two.
Yeah, you two. Yeah, and I think the team's fine.
All right, let's go for it, stick with that.
Did a great job.
So the, okay, so there's no action there, that is just, that is continue, agreeing, I mean, we continue.
Yeah, I just, I wanted an interpretation of, cause like I say, we've never done that in the past.
So then the next step is then.
Strategy.
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 And 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 in all, and in all fairness, in the past, the negotiation cycles have been two and three years apart. And recently, under the last negotiations, we did the year changes where they became within the same year or close to within the same year.
Yeah, that's why.
So that's why you're you're having this thing where they're they're both coming around the same time, or one's just finishing up and another one's getting ready to start.
So Jay, you are, are you the alternate then? Were you the alternate?
I was originally.
Still tend to be.
So that'll be you.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't care, whatever you guys want, doesn't matter.
I can't do it.
Huh?
I can't do it.
Well, and that's a question I had, can she do it?
No, no, I cannot.
Not a being a teacher.
No.
I I think we had talked about our.
Yeah.
Because this is, these are support staff, it's a little bit different.
Don't worry, I don't, I think you guys are way better than teachers worry about.
It doesn't matter, whatever you guys want.
No hat and a ring.
Still, we still need a backup.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, so you guys are the lead team, you're the alternate?
Yep, and so, I think I'll ask, I'm a little off, uh, off base with the agenda here, but I'll add, the contracts are on the, on the school site. If. If you can, just go in and and review.
Do it, okay.
See if there's anything in there, I've asked Sean already to get with the leadership team and look through, understand what what's there and.
Cause the first meeting usually is just setting up the rules and.
Timeline.
Timelines and stuff, so we don't need, so the next meeting, we can do our executive session and get the input of where we're going and where we're headed.
Okay. And where we're headed, fair enough.
And when's the first meeting, Sean?
Um, Mike?
Uh, I'll have to, I can get, I'm not even a hundred percent sure we've actually scheduled it.
I can do it if you want me to, I've been contacting.
We've been, we've been contacted already, so.
Who who have they chosen for their negotiator?
Um, I can look it up.
Is it Karen?
Karen Green.
Karen Green.
Yeah.
Twitter is distracting.
No.
Sit off.
When the pause, check out the pictures.
I don't know if we know.
Yeah, I don't think we've got an area, I'll, we'll nail that down, and in November we'll look through and
That's fine.
Part of our executive session will be, uh, those items.
On November?
In November.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, anything else? Thank you for that one, I had slipped, that one did slip. So the self-evaluation, um, this will be, this will be four or five that I've collected, so. If you can date it, please, so I can get the chronological order, um, on those.
I don't, that top doesn't fit on there.
No names? Don't.
No names.
No names, just names.
No names.
I'll put your name on mine, Mike.
Uh, uh, constructive feedback is always welcome, and obviously, that's welcome at any point in time. I don't think you guys are too bashful about giving, so.
Can I tweet it to you?
I it may take me a while to get it. I gotta get a smartphone first, I've been fighting.
No, you don't, man, you got a computer, you don't need a smartphone to be on Twitter.
Yeah, I know, I know. It reminds me of, can't go there.
Now, when you say the meeting was well attended, are you referring, you referring to board members?
I think we decided by bo- I think we decided last time it's by board members. Yes.
All the kind of forms.
That one we should be able to pass with flying colors.
I got distracted by tweets, is that okay?
Well, you're open about it. And again, some of the bun- ones at the bottom here, we're gonna have a little trouble getting to some of it, so.
Who are the owners in the one that talks about? The board spends most of its time debating, defining, and clarifying its vision, and in linking with its owners and public, as opposed to fixing things.
So that is a a view toward the community, rather than in toward running the school.
Mm-hmm, but the owners are the public, is that one of the same?
Owners, owners would be, would be not stakeholders, they would be taxpayers, um, they would be community owner, of community members, um, in that particular instance, staff wouldn't be con- staff would be considered part of the stakeholders, but they're not part of the owners.
Hmm.
So there is a tiny bit of a clarification between the two.
So what's the difference in owners and public?
Hmm, not all members of the public, I would think, lives necessarily live in Wodenski. Most do, but not all.
I think the key, the key piece there is is how are are we looking at things with a view to what we want out, rather than how we're getting things from.
Right, gotcha.
I think the one in here, one of these items that touches a nerve for me is that uh, board uses less than fifteen percent of the meeting time monitoring past performance.
Yeah.
And we've typically, historically, we got mired into the past at determining how how to run things, and the discussions we've been having are very different from where we had been, and I think it's it's refreshing to look forward rather than backward, cause I'm certainly not a teacher, can't certainly speak for all of us, but, um, to take the focus out of how you do it, rather than what we want done, has been refreshing for me. Okay, um, we do have, uh, tonight, an executive session, have two items to cover. So I would, uh, accept a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Polls?